I know it's time to get started because it got quiet. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front desk over here and present it to the City Clerk and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order and convene the City Council and City Council Successor Agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Grand Terrace for August 8, 2017. We will have invocation offered tonight by Pastor Tim Isom of the Faith Way Fellowship Church of the Nazarene. And immediately following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Richard Adams. So please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and we thank you that we can pause and offer our prayers whether in silent or out loud and that you hear our prayers, Lord. And Heavenly Father, we just pray that you continue to guide the City Council and the Mayor and our deputies and firemen that protect our city and the citizens, Lord, and we just ask for your blessing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Isom. Thank you City Attorney Adams. Madam City Clerk, will you please give us a vote call?
Councilmember Reinars.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Mayor Protem Robles is absent.
Thank you. I understand that Mayor Protem is on her way and she will be joining us a little bit later into the meeting. This time, we have no special presentations, so we'll move to the consent calendar, which is expected to have items that are routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any items that you'd like to remove at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment and this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not appearing on our regular agenda tonight. But because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask for clarification. Also, a brief response may be requested from staff and the matter may be agendized for a future meeting. Are there requests to speak during this time? Thank you. Our first speaker is Dustin Reilich.
Thank you Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dustin Reilich. I'm the Senior Director of Market Development for Renovate America's HERO Program. We're an energy efficiency and water efficiency financing program that in the past has been available through Sandbag here in the region, and that was through the end of June that that was available. We actually have recently joined the CSCDA Joint Power Authority that's through the League of California Cities, and I'm here just to give you a short update, not to take too much of your time, and hopefully someday in the future, we might be able to discuss and answer any questions for you. But the HERO Program has helped 167 of your local homeowners, and I gave you a packet there that actually gives you a little information on the inside left that actually gives you a little info on the program. And our program actually helps to do any type of renewable energy or energy efficiency financing. Some of the things that we have done statewide in San Bernardino County, we've done 16,000 projects financed. In California, we've done 100,000 projects financed. And what we've done is we've really changed a lot of the ways that we do processes. We've changed our contractor quality scorecard to make sure that we're looking for the best of the best contractors that are working in your locality to make sure that they're stimulating local jobs and making sure that all of the bad actor contractors are actually not being using the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. We've also created new disclosure forms that came out of AB 2693, which was legislation last year that was put into law. So this is a know before you owe type of disclosure, and I actually have that on the right side of your folder, second page there, so that you can actually see what a disclosure looks like. And then also, at the same time, we've actually changed some of our rates. So we have start rates for a five-year term that start at 2.99% because homeowners have told us that some of the six and seven and eight percent rates were just a little bit too high. So we've actually adjusted that in the marketplace as well. So we joined the CSCDA Open Pace Program in June of this year, and hopefully sometime in the future, we'll be able to pass a resolution to make our program available once again to your constituents through the CSCDA Open Pace Program. And I'm here for any questions that you may have, or if in the future you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reilich. I will mention right here, I did have a meeting with Mr. Reilich and told him that I would suggest to colleagues, if you are interested in this being agendized, please let the City Manager know after the meeting today. Our next speaker has turned in two speaker slips. Mr. Jeff Allen, if you would, please combine your topics.
Do I get to combine those times to six minutes, ma'am?
Five and a half.
I don't think I'll need...
Five and three quarters.
Okay. Jeff Allen, 22549 Brentwood Street. The reason I'm here tonight, for the councilmembers, and it's also for those in the audience, not just here present behind me, but those that are listening on their televisions, there are some legislation that is before the State Assembly and the State Senate that I think that our citizens should be aware of or may want to be aware of. It was certainly of interest to me. Senate Bill 35 is the Planning and Zoning Affordable Housing Act, which would remove and greatly restrict the control of the local community over multifamily housing development within the community. It actually affords a streamlined opportunity for developers wishing to develop multifamily units that do not meet the adequate criteria set forth in local ordinances, but yet they can bypass those and go to the state level if they agree that a certain percentage would be for low and extremely low income housing and remain that way for 30 years. Now, there's opposing viewpoints in this legislature and that particular bill, and there's a competing bill, Senate Bill 540, which is supported by the League of California Cities, and the League does not support Senate Bill 35, I should add. They do support Senate Bill 540, the Workforce Housing Opportunity Zone, and I want to preface this, I am not a spokesperson for them, but I just wanted to let you know that they do support this one because what this does is it creates streamlined opportunities for developers, but it retains it at the local level so that the City Council and the City Planning Commission continue to maintain control over the development, and the citizens are allowed the opportunity to input what they want to say about local development, which SP 35 takes away. So I would encourage those of you within the sound of my voice to please contact your State Senator Connie Leva, if that is yours, if you're in Grand Terrace, and Assemblymember Eloise Reyes, and let them know what you feel about these two provisions that would take, one would take away your voice and your control in development of multifamily development, and another one that would keep it here and keep the funding here. Now, on the second one that I wanted to talk about is, there's another Senate, a bill before the Senate, Senate Bill 649 from Senator Hueso out of Chula Vista. And this is a Senate bill that requires local government to lease public land, even in the right of ways, to telecommunications companies. It takes away the fair use fees. It does not give the municipality the opportunity to even negotiate for public benefits, and it caps the fair use fees at a very unreasonable rate to the cities and municipalities that the telecommunications companies want to erect telecommunications towers and boxes and anything they want. It was small cell until it got amended last month, and now it's everything that you cannot say no to. And I don't agree with that, and I would encourage you to also voice your opinions on Senate Bill 649. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time? Seeing no takers, I will close public comments, and I would like to recognize the arrival of Mayor Protem Robles. We'll come back to City Council for their communications, starting with Councilmember Brian Reinars.
Thank you, Mayor. As I'm certain all of you know by now, there was a deputy-involved shooting in Grand Terrace on Thursday, July 27th, in which a young man lost his life. And the men and women of the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department who were involved in this incident are to be commended. Their professionalism and devotion to the safety and residence of the residents of this county and the City of Grand Terrace was on clear display yet again during this incident. It is my understanding that everything that could have been done at the scene to avoid this outcome was done. The decisive action of the sheriff personnel in responding to and containing the situation served to ensure the safety of residents and surrounding homes, preventing further injury and loss of life. It is indeed comforting to know that we continue to be served and protected by a group of professionals such as this. In addition, I would like to extend heartfelt best wishes and prayers to the family and friends of this young man. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reinars. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and Councilreinars took the words right out of my mouth. I'd like to thank the sheriffs and the first responders for everything you did that night, protecting our residents or citizens, and just thank you for, you know, putting yourself in harm's way. You know, your men and women should be really commended on professionalism they did. I'd like to thank the residents, you know, who helped out, you know, made sure, you know, that they were helping each other's neighbors. I'd like to thank the city staff for opening up City Hall, that, you know, people needed the place to come and stay, they could have came here for safe passage. And family, prayers, but, you know, also being a Marine Corps vet, PTSD is a serious thing. There's resources out there to get help. Family members, you also can call. All you gotta do is Google it, any of the veteran centers are there to help you, to help you help the family member in that vet. So you have to be proactive, you have to go out to the resources and keep going, you know. I dealt with the VA hospitals sometimes, you know, one quick story, the lady fell asleep on me three times taking my blood pressure, so. And that wasn't a very good thing, and then they missed my spine with the needle one time, and so we missed it, we'll try again. I said, "No, you're not," so I'm not going there again. But they do have some professionals there that really are out there to help the vets. So a couple people, you know, you have bad apples, but just keep going, keep researching. You know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, so it's up to you, your family members, to help each other out. But once again, thank you, you know, if your men and women did a professional job, and all the first responders, and thank you, Grand Terrace, and thank you, Mr. Duffy, for your staff staying here that night and keeping the doors open. Thank you, everybody, God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. PTSD affects many people, not just we're veterans, and unfortunately, it made me cry, just the thought pattern. We were involved from the standpoint that the person that lived across the street was on her way home from the jet propulsion laboratory, and the sheriffs were staged pretty close to her front yard. So we stayed on the phone with her to let her know the status that we knew because we had been contacted by the City Manager to let us know what was taking place, and I congratulate the sheriffs for their activity and the way they handled everything, was very professional. There were more people than you can shake a stick at, this community is very small, and they all showed up over there, but it was controlled, completely controlled, and it's extremely unfortunate this young man lost his life. We make decisions sometimes we can't come back from, and, oh, anyway. Couple of things. In the larger aspect of, not to diminish, obviously, but in the larger aspect of some of our processing, recently, I guess within the last, say, three or four years, Governor Brown signed a water bill. And that water bill is what we saw kind of a result of when we saw the report from our water district, that it is an adjudicated district that had until 2022 to come up with a water basin plan. All of the water basins, all the way up and down California, are obligated to do this. They either have an obligation at 2020 or 2022 if it's an adjudicated district. The concept being is that the districts are, the responsibility for managing the water supply has now fallen back to the districts themselves. This becomes kind of a sticky wicket because an awful lot of our water supply comes from the San Joaquin Delta, and as that water dribbles down to the various districts, it is, you know, state-wise, there's quite a bit of control from conservation and environmental circumstances that have effectively created a de facto cutoff on a lot of our water supply. Fortunately, we are equipped because of the amount of alluvium and the various water supplies that we have coming down into the valley, and because our district was adjudicated a long time ago, so it basically split the need for San Bernardino and Riverside and made sure that Riverside was able to take care of its farming needs at the time, I'll tell you how long ago it was, that we are at least separated in how our issues work. For now, water use is also in pretty good shape for this area, including Grand Terrace. We have water wells that are functioning like they're supposed to, and we have water recharge that has not triggered any additional water to be dumped into the aquifers. That doesn't always happen, and technically, we are on a, we are still in a drought condition because, in fact, we've been in a drought condition for a long time, and I believe that's the way it was presented last time. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the fact that even though the water district has relaxed some of the requirements as far as how you water, what times you water, and so on, we still have to be really aware, always be aware of the fact that it is, though it is a renewable resource. I have watched and read about information in relation to this planet over the last, maybe, I don't know, year and a half, that just grips my gut when you realize how much damage the world is doing to itself, and the world at owl is not able to recover from some of these things. And when you look at some of the, 50% of our coral beds have disappeared. They've turned gray, they've died. It's just a real measure to us to realize what kind of a legacy we're leaving to our children and our grandchildren. So that's my soapbox for today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
I have no meetings to report because Ametranes went dark. They won't be meeting until Thursday, but I do want to, I asked the mayor to adjourn the memory of Ulayo Aldako. He's the father of Alfonso Aldako and his wife Beverly, who's a member of the Women's Club. He was 99 years old. Before his wife died, three years ago, they had celebrated 74 years of marriage. And just as an aside, my parents, well, my father was born and raised in Needles, and my mom grew up there, and every time I had a friend, she would ask, "Oh, who is their mom and dad? I might know them." And I would ask her, "You don't know anybody, you're from Needles," because it's so small. And the Aldakos lived in Arizona, and I says, "Mom, they lived in Arizona." And she goes, "But where?" And she goes, "Oh, I know them," because they lived in Gold Road, which apparently is just across from Needles on the other side of the border. And it's just, we all grew up together in South San Bernardino, and some of us, you know, live here now, and it's just, you know, part of that legacy has passed away, and I just want to make sure the family knows that we recognize that, and we send our condolences. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'm going to say it in front of everybody now. Happy belated birthday to you. I don't have much to report either. I do want to express my thank you to the sheriff and the fine job that they did in a very, very tough situation. I did speak with Sergeant Silva, who pulled together the whole operation, and he really helped me understand the full extent of the resources that we get when we need them here, and it's unfortunate that we needed to find that out, but it really was nice to see such a professional show of response when we needed it. And I'm also, my prayers are to the family and friends of the young man who unfortunately met his, at his end that day. And it's very nice that the community has come out to support the family and to be there for them, and so I thank them for being that support for the family. And I will move on to the next item. We have no public hearings tonight, but we will move to unfinished business. Tonight, we have Mr. Tracy from CHP DevCo to talk to us about some work that his company's been doing. We are speaking, he's going to be speaking specifically about an agreement that we had for them to look at development of parcel, or properties 22273, 22293, and 22313 Barton Road. These are successor agency and city-owned properties. Mr. Tracy, if you would.
Good evening. Mr. Duffy, the council, thank you for the opportunity to give you a progress report. As I believe most of you know, and perhaps those in the audience don't know, we are about 75 days into a 90-day exclusive negotiating agreement for the properties just mentioned. So this is going to be a progress report for the work that we've done so far. I'm happy to report that since we ran out to the market approximately 75 days ago, we have probably, well, over a dozen interested retailers in the property, and I don't know how to work this, but I could show you. Yeah, I imagine it's not that difficult, but, yeah, if we could go to the site plan. I see. Okay. So it's... It's not that. It's not that. It's that. Okay.
It just takes a while to think about it.
Okay. So the plan, obviously, is retail. This is one of the proposed, the main proposed plan for the approximate five acres along Barton, and as I mentioned, we have... plan for the approximate five acres along Barton. And as I mentioned, we have over a dozen interested retailers to come to the site. So we're very encouraged about that. Several of the retailers that are interested have indicated to us that them coming to this particular location to our site, to your site, until we purchase it, is access to the signal that is not shown on this. And I'm not sure if it's shown on one of the...
The signal on Canal Street?
Yes, the signal on Canal Street. Thank you. Which is, you can be, can be seen there at the aerial. So the property stops just short of that access to the signal. However, in discussions with the city and Mr. Duffy and his, his team are able to find that as a condition of approval, I believe it goes back, correct me if I'm wrong, Harold, to somewhere in the mid 90s, that as a condition of approval for the Brookdale development, they needed to provide access to this, to this, the western, what would be the easternmost property of the two properties, but, but to the west of their site. So we have started to engage in discussions with Brookdale to figure out exactly what the access agreement would look like. We are interested perhaps in purchasing that property in the front that is owned by Brookdale and/or if we are not successful in the purchase of that property, then looking out sometime an arrangement for an easement, which is essentially a requirement of theirs at this juncture. We have really just begun those discussions. So we look forward to getting a meeting, sitting down, talking frankly with them, and finding out what that access is going to look like, and hopefully expediting those discussions. So that is a big part of what we feel would be the future success of getting the retailers in that have shown interest to the property. In the meantime, we're going to continue to market. As soon as we feel comfortable, we've had our first meeting with Brookdale, we're going to adjust our marketing package and the site plan that we've shown to show what we feel would be the most likely access from the signal into the property. And the city's engineering department and traffic is actually underway right now in doing a study and a review of what the most likely scenario would be to gain access in a, obviously in a, in a safe and reasonable fashion to the site. And we'll adjust our site plan accordingly. I think that's it in terms of the key, the highlights, the retailer interest, the site plan, and the access to the signal. I'm here to answer any questions.
Does the council have questions of Mr. Tracy at this time? Mr. Duffy, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the city manager. As the council is aware, this project is a project which the council acquired the former string field property to make this project happen. The Hosen Successor Agency owns the other portion of the property. So as the way the project works is a council entered into an exclusive negotiations agreement with CHP Devco. And they were, it's a 90-day process. And during that, after that 90-day process, we are supposed to either reach an agreement for a disposition and development agreement that basically says that they're going to be developing the property, and these are the things that they're going to be doing on the property. So I would anticipate coming back to the council within the next 30, 45 days with that disposition of the development agreement. As Mr., as Mr. Tracy indicated, we are working with Brookdale, and we've had some nice conversations with them. They want some enhancements to their sign for entryway there. So it looks like it's going to be a viable project. So we look forward to moving forward with CHP Devco.
So we're 75 days in, and you're coming back to us in 45 days. And it's a 90-day agreement.
So, so at the end, at the end of the 90-day agreement, there is an opportunity to develop a DDA. And during that time, if both parties agree that we want to extend, move on, we have 60 days to hammer out the DDA and bring it back to the council. I was being a little ambitious by saying 45 days, but I think we can make that 45- and 60-day window.
All right. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Tracy?
I just want to thank you for your time. And we are, we're encouraged by the response from the marketplace, by the retailers. And we have very much, we've done developments in many cities. And I just want to extend a, kind of a thank you and a, and a few kudos to, to Mr. Duffy and his staff. They've been wonderful to work with.
Thank you for being here tonight. And I look forward to the time when you can come and tell us about the commitments that you have from these retailers.
That makes two of us.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to new business, item 10. Review and recommend projects for further assessment and funding with excess redevelopment bond proceeds. Mr. Duffy?
Once again, thank you, Mayor. In February 2012, the Redevelopment Disillusionment Act, or ABX 126, said that cities could no longer use their redevelopment bond money. Grand Terrace had about $18 million in redevelopment bond money before the dissolution happened. In September of 2015, the Disillusionment Act was amended with Senate Bill 107. That Senate bill allowed agencies with a notice of completion to use 5% of those bond proceeds to carry out the original redevelopment plan. The formula used by the state ultimately resulted in the city being able to use about $289,000. An additional 15% will be, will be available once the city submits its last and final ROPS, which is the recognized obligation payment schedule. That means basically the bonds that we have or the debt that we have for redevelopment has to be calculated out for payments before any of the excess money can be used. So tonight, what staff was representing is a list of projects or items consistent with council's comments. This report will not commit any funds to any items discussed tonight. The report, the report provides the opportunity for staff to get feedback from the council on projects and that council might embrace. But it also gives us a chance to examine any additional items the council would like to discuss. So we start off this process with, the city has in its possession $289,000 that it's allowed to use to carry out the city's redevelopment plan. And because I indicated, there's quick history, but I didn't say, though, that in addition to the 15, the 15% will range from $2 million to $2.4 million, that the city would be going, an additional exercise. And this kind of exercise tonight kind of helps us. So if there's something that's really big and broad that you'd like to think about, that is way beyond the $289,000, but you want staff to really go back and examine, we'll come back in, in January with that $2 million to $2.4 million that we have, that we have available to use. So our recommendation is review and recommend proj, review and recommend projects. Nothing is too small or too big. Remember, we are committing funds, we are not committing funds, but committing our thoughts in the, in a forward-thinking direction for the city. Okay. So here's the list that is actually in, is in the packet, but it's, it's kind of changed from the packet in terms of, I've added dollar amounts in the inside as we go through each project. But one of the things I want to say that's very important, if you look at the chart, you'll see some things are highlighted. So in June, the city approved the Dog Park Program and agreed to use about $50,000 for that Dog Park Program. So there again, there was an action taken by the council to use, use the bond proceeds. As I said earlier, no action will be taken by the council, no, no act, no, no funding will be appropriated or spent without the council taking a separate action from tonight. Okay. So I'll go down the list. So first, as I said before, there's a Dog Park Project, and that was funded on June 13, 2017. That was an allocation of $50,000, which the council approved as part of the funding mechanism for the Dog Park. Next is the Child Care Center. So this is what's happening at the center. There's, there are deficiencies in the playground area. And so although the city of Grand Terrace is no longer in the childcare business, we still own this facility. And as we're transferring the license from the city to FSA, Family Service Agency, we're concerned that because of these deficiencies, it will not pass state licensing. And so one of the things that we're proposing tonight is that the council agreed to a $30,000 expenditure of bond proceeds for the floor and a tarp. There is a later report tonight from Public Works to request an appropriation of, I think, $25,000 for, to fix, fix the flooring. And council, at any point in time, I can stop and ask, answer any questions that you might have. Just another picture of what's, what's there. Okay, Richard Rollins Park. So this project is to rehabilitate, rehabilitation of playground equipment and add new wood chips. Estimated cost is around $40,000. Here's a picture of the, of the wood chip area. It's about two inches, in terms of deficit in terms of material that's there. One of the things that's a serious issue with the kids slide off the slides, there's, there's the bigger drop than it actually should be. And this is a picture of the current play structure in that area. That structure has a hole there, and our goal is to, to fix it. So the goal is to use the redevelopment bond proceeds to fix this playground area. Now, once again, the, the item will come back to the council for this to, for this to happen.
Mr. Duffy, I have a question about this item and the Child Care Center. Are these allowed uses for the bond proceeds? They seem to be maintenance. And, and my understanding with the redevelopment money was that it was not intended for maintenance.
Well, we're, we're, we believe it is. We're saying that it's rehabilitation and not normal maintenance.
Where's the line between rehabilitation and maintenance, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah. So we went through this with, with the attorney to make sure, because they had, they had some concerns about this. So we, we worked it out, but we were, we think that we're going to be just fine.
We're, we're on the side of the rehabilitation and not close to the maintenance line. Okay. Thank you.
This is a, a picture of the swimming pool at the middle school. And this project was approved with the funding options, and the council approved this on June 13. But the staff has, has, believes that we have enough money in our park impact fees that we better use to use the proceeds for, for that. So it's a line item in, in the list of projects, but it's not listed as, as part of a total project dollar amount. So that's an estimated cost of $51,000, which we are going to be using park impact fees for. So we won't be using, requesting any money for the redevelopment bond proceeds. A Barton and Honey Hill Landscape. So these are a few pictures of Barton and Honey Hill. As you can see, the side to your right and then farther across the way, they're, they're very well landscaped. But you can't quite see, but across the street, it's a bad view from the sun. I have another, another view of that. So if you see the, somehow, there's a wooden fence on the four corners. And so what we are proposing, this is a picture of that, is to make that landscaping, put the wall that's, that's supposed to be required there, work with the property owner to do that, and then landscape the, the bottom area. So it's, so it's consistent with the remaining area. We believe the cost for the wall is about $15,000 and with an estimated $15,000 cost, dollar cost for landscaping.
And whose land is, is it outside of the fence?
It's in the public right of the way, yes.
It is in the public. All right, okay.
Okay. This is bus terminals or smart bus terminals. They have multiple bus terminals as you can, for park and ride, for riding, for putting your bikes on. And then they have them where you can get information in terms of when the bus is coming. So this is something that we just, we've heard comments in the past from the council about bus terminals shading and so on and so on. So we thought we would bring this item to the council to see if there was any interest in us pursuing this and working with Omni Trans to see if there's a, a matching fund or what's, what would be required to get the estimates and bring it back to the council. This is a sign on Palm and Barton Roads, digital billboard. One of the problems that we're having with this particular sign, it's not working right now, but it's very hard to read. And one of the things we'd like to do is take, take out this, the inner workings of this board and replace it with an LED light system that would be easy to read and, and be more accessible for the public to be able to see without causing any bright, bright light issues. And so that estimated cost is not to exceed $40,000. So I'm just looking, as I said, to bring these projects forward to get some potential feedback. If it's something that the council is not, is not interested in, we can prioritize and move on to something else. It's the facade business incubator program. This program was actually listed in the redevelopment plan that the city would work with property owners to take old buildings and put a facade in the front of them. Grants can be offered in, from $20,000 or as little as $10,000. There's no, there's no real limit. Actually, it's one of the projects that I worked on when I first started working for the City of Redlands back in 1987 as an intern, was the facade program on State Street. So in the past, we've talked about the library expansion or even a, a community center. So one of the thoughts would be, would be to, to take about $25,000 and hire an architect or a concept designer to, to, to review the, to give us a concept drawing of what all the property that we own on this site would look like. The other option might be to look at, check with the library, and the, the community room is sufficient enough to expand the library. The problem with that, with that is we ended up losing a community room. So we really would have to think about long-term, is there a community center in our future? Can we expand the library? So something to look at what the concept, it would be like a concept project. And so I could bring that back to the council if they were interested in, in knowing more about that. Electric vehicle charging station. So we actually have several charging stations in the city. They are not operable. There's two that are behind or next to Hollywood Video, right behind the Shell, the Chevron Station. And then we also have one here at City Hall. But they're outdated. And so one of the things that we would be doing is we, we are in line for a grant with Air Quality Management District with about $30,000 for new charging stations. But one of the concepts is we would look at what it would cost, either working with Edison or someone else to revitalize or to rehabilitate our existing three charging stations that we have. We also have an application into the state for cap and trade money for the Urban Greening Grant Program. And we are going to need about $65,000 for matching funds if we are successful in, in that particular grant. There are a number of items within that project that would qualify for the use of, of the bond proceeds to ensure that we have our match. And so we, Ms. Melina can talk about that if you have any other further questions or comments regarding the Urban Greening Grant, and if there are any. Okay. Veterans Freedom Park Basketball Courts. So the expenditure here is about $50,000. And what happens with this is it takes our existing basketball court. So the expenditure here is about $50,000. And what happens with this is it takes our existing basketball court and it lays a flex overlay on top of it. And it's, it's easier on the knees, it's, it's good playing process, and it, it can be decorated in our Veterans Freedom Wall, Veterans Freedom Park logos. And it comes another, here's another slide here too that shows a, a different mock-up of that. The next item is mobile bleachers. Mobile bleachers can be used for special events and also remain at Veterans Freedom Park during baseball season. Estimated cost is $40,000. Now, I'm going to show you the first slide. It's very impressive, but it's not for, it's a $75,000 item. But I, it was a very beautiful slide, so I wanted to show it to you. That's mobile. You, you, that folds together and drives, take it somewhere else, take it to any event that you have. So it could take it, you could put it for baseball season, you could move it over for, if you're having an event at the Freedom Wall, you could take it to Community Day, you could take it just about anywhere you wanted to go, to, to light it up Grand Terrace and so on and so on. Here's the item that's, that's really the $40,000 one. That actually seats 110 people.
And what, and what type of vehicle is used?
A regular F-350. Okay. Also, we talked about looking at entryway signs on Main Street and Taylor, where the city starts on the, on the south end of town. And also, one of the concepts is to maybe put some lights around this particular facility. This is coming in from Washington and Barton. And at night, there's not enough, because it's not lit, so it'd be nice to have that manicured and lit as part of the process. This is a, last year, the city started their urban landscape program, and we have a five-year pruning cycle throughout the city. One of the first things that we did as part of that process was to remove 100 trees that were dead or diseased trees. And so one of the things that we can do with this, we can, we can purchase about 100 trees to replace those trees which we removed. And actually, part of our contract with our urban landscaper is that they gave, they gave us a cost for this per tree. So we, we can actually do that if we want to move forward in that particular area. We also have the sidewalk rehabilitation program. Last year, we, we did about $30,000 worth of sidewalk replacement and grinding. And so the goal would be is to also go back and do a sidewalk rehabilitation in, in this year with, with that, with the bond proceeds. So I've gone through quite a few projects. You can just see the report. You can give me some comments. I can say that in the initial, go back to the front, the very first one, there we go. And you have the sheet here. The, the two highlighted items other than the dog park are Richard Rollins Park and the childcare playground maintenance. So you have a staff report tonight that's going to address the, the childcare playground maintenance. And we're going to come back to you within the next couple of weeks with the Richard Rollins Park rehab, because those items expose the city to some liability if we leave that the way it is. We need to get that taken care of as quickly as possible.
I would imagine the sidewalk repair does too. May I pretend, did you have a comment?
Well, I didn't know and, and because the agenda that I got had no discussion about some of these projects. So I wondered, does the public have enough notice also? Because it's substantially amended.
I agree, it is substantially amended. There are quite a few more projects in here.
And the amount. There was no forecast of future money. So I wouldn't want to do anything today until the citizens have an opportunity to mull over also and have some public input. But just real quickly, I don't know what my peers think, but that digital billboard, spending $40,000 on something that if I still lived on the other side of Grand Terrace, I would have never driven by this site to be notified of anything. And I just don't know how much of it, I, I don't know if it can be repurposed for a scoreboard or anything, but it just, I just feel it was a bad purchase to begin with, and throwing more money at it is not something that I'm for. Of course, anything, you know, the library expansion though was that, you know, we lease space to the county government, but it's something to look into. The only thing was about the Veterans Park. There was a discussion at some point of doing some interpretive, you know, oral projects and all that. You know, everything looks excellent here. The only thing on, 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 on looking on this, maybe there might be some discussion on Michigan Street, has no sidewalks, has no lighting. I know you're, we're doing lighting landscaping districts, but it's a major artery. Maybe there's some solar lights that, you know, once you put the capital costs, the solar takes care of the maintenance part. Maybe some trees, because again, that would, would enhance the city's beautification and desirability. And the bus shelter, when I sat in, when, when Omni-Trans comes and, and does a meeting with cities, they talked about these shelters and they quoted a, a price of $50,000. And they also discussed that meeting, the difficulty of serving the high school students and because of Michigan, and also the bus route. But it's, and also that's a major interchange between people ferrying from Riverside. That might be something to look into. And I think it's just kind of a futuristic thing. I, I, whenever I have these discussions, I say that, that Grand Terrace is almost like a harbor city. That people are going to be ferrying to Orange County, LA, Riverside, and, and there's, because we're so small, there's very little discussion at, at times about that. But that's all that jumps out at me.
Any other comments?
Well, I agree with the mayor pro tem on that electronic sign. I go, if I was a reader, I'd have to slow down, pretty much stop to read the thing. I never liked it from the beginning. It kind of, I think it looked tacky, but I'm just one vote. And I don't see wasting, or personally wasting $40,000 on getting that, when we could just get a regular sign that we have out there on our kiosk where people read that, you know, one message. That's just my opinion, but I, I'm just, like what the mayor said, I'm a little worried about especially Richard Rollins Park and the Child Center. I know that Child Center is brought up to our attention, but we should have brought that to our attention a long time ago so none of the children get hurt because they are our responsibility. And I know, Mr. Duffy, that you replaced some of the slides on that playground equipment, you know, because they're being ruined by people not sliding down, they're doing other things to it. But my only concern is, you know, we keep putting money, I mean, are we going to get new playground equipment that's more sturdy, reliable? I mean, when I was a kid growing up, it was all metal, you know, you couldn't break anything on that stuff.
I don't think that's allowed, do you?
Yes.
Well, that's what happened. And that's, you know, now we went to plastic. But I'm worried about some kid getting hurt, and I think we got to expedite that, even if we don't have the bond. I mean, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. So that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Duffy?
Well, I was going to say that there, there are, there's new, there's a new type of playground equipment that's out there now that's more of a, it's lower to the ground and it's, it's not as, you know, they don't have slide. They have other interpretive and, and, and helps you with, with motor skills and stuff like that. So we can, we can certainly bring that material back, and you could probably be creating a, a playground for the future. And we can certainly bring some different type of things back for you.
Okay. Are there requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Mr. Jeff Allen?
Thank you, Mayor, for the record. Jeff Allen, 22549 Brentwood Street. Couple of comments I have after listening to Mr. Duffy's comments. I've used Richard Rollins Park Play Area, take my grandchildren there on a regular basis. I, there's been more ti, more than once that broken glass has been found in those wood chips. I'd strongly recommend that you look at the type of playground padded surface. For example, that Holda Crooks Park in Loma Linda has. It's a solid, soft rubber mat. Like they, I think they even pour it and it solidifies somewhat. But you can easily see anything dangerous laying on top of it. It doesn't hide inside the wood chips. That fitness park down there, so I've talked with several grandparents who take their kids and parents over here to Rollins Park during the day. The fitness park would be used more during the summertime if there was more shade over those playground equipment. It's, you, you can't even touch it. It'll burn, burn your skin, as, as an adult, much as a child. So I'd like you to look at that. And I, as a citizen, would like to say thank you to those two members of the council who voiced a, a good, solid, honest opinion about those electronic, tacky electronic signs that never should have been erected. Such a distraction to drivers. And can we please start a discussion on trying to recover and restore Gage Park? That's a, that's a jewel in the crown of Grand Terrace on the Sally's Corner that could be a destin, weekend destination if it was developed right. Trails to the riverbed and UCR from that park, train station, whatever you want. But it's a beautiful park that our city should have back in its possession for use for its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item?
Jeffrey McCarver, Loma Avenue, quite the wish list there, so I'm, I was sitting there thinking, hoping that more AL, ALPR cameras in the city would benefit the safety of the commu, community, whether it's digital or ALPRs. Maybe you can get some numbers on that, if that can be added to the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak during this time?
If you would approach the lectern and speak into the microphone. Thank you. I don't really have much to, to speak on, but I do have examples of what he is requesting and what we're requesting for the childcare center at Grand Terrace.
And for the record, your name is?
Oh, sorry. My name is Karina Rocha, and I'm representing No Fault Sport Group.
Thank you.
So if you'd like, I could give you this, or?
You could go ahead and leave it with the city clerk right now. And so this is examples of?
Of the rubber surfacing that they inquired about for Ri, Richard Rollins. I actually have helped a few of the city members on that project, and I'm helping Allen with Child Care Center. I do recommend, there's ways of bringing down the cost by maybe just staying in the safe zones and the fall zones. That would actually help greatly.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time? All right. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council. And Mr. Duffy, you had something more you'd like to say?
Yes, Mayor. So part of the Richard Rollins Park project, where that breaks down is that, that slide repair is about $9,000. And the wood chips is about $22,000. So if the council is interested in the rubberized surface, which our estimates that Allen has received is about $90,000. We don't want to spend the $22,000 and then come back and do the $90,000. But you certainly have enough money if that's what you want to do in terms of bond proceeds. But that is a significant amount, but you can certainly do that. If, if I get some direction to come back, I can certainly examine that and bring that back to you.
Before I go there, ALPR, can we look at those types of issues, or those types of projects under redevelopment bond? That, that is allowable?
No. What I was saying, we'd have, be happy to look it up to see if it could be.
Okay. So right on the surface, you, you're not sure of that. Okay.
No. Public improvements is kind of a broad concept. Baron Bettenhousen from my office has been working with Mr. Duffy on those type things, and we'll run that by him.
Okay. I like the idea of, of not putting wood chips back, but that's just my own personal bias towards that. I do like rubberized surfaces. I think, I think they give more protection than wood chips do, and I always worry about splinters. And now I worry about glass.
So may, we, we were going to bring this item back to the council for the wood chips. What we can do, we can bring the item back to the council with three options. One is for the wood chips. Two is for the, the soft padding in certain areas where the playground is, that would reduce the cost. And then bring it back for the entire, that entire area.
Well, that's, yeah. Well, that's a thing in the, I mean, we eliminate that sign project, we could afford the soft padding.
How about shade for the fitness park? I think that would be an interesting thing to look at as well.
The shading, the, sort of like the tarps. Yeah, okay.
And, and I would agree that, that the digital sign would be very last on my, on my, my list. I don't like having it sitting there doing nothing. But I've also heard a lot of complaints from residents about the, the billboard sign. From they don't see it because they live on the other side of town, so they don't go by that way, to it is a distraction. So I'm not sure how we could repurpose that or make it more useful, but I would say that would be last on my list as well.
Two things. I, I would like to kind of get a consensus, because I kind of hate to get things that have like three options, and we've got a lot of options, if the, kind of the consensus is, is that wood chips are out. So, and then before I yield the mic, Gage Park, I see a lot of discussion, Gage Park. And my understanding, it's not even in our, in our city limits.
It, it is, but it's privately owned.
Okay. Because I, when I was a volunteer for the city, we had a volunteer's picnic there. It was Edison, Edison Property. Okay. So then I was told in, by, in a prop, by mistake, by staff, okay, that it was not in the city limits. So now it is in the city limits.
Ms. Malina, can you?
Okay.
That, that's right, Mr. City Manager. It is in our city limits, and it's privately owned.
Okay. So I think it'd be worthwhile expending some efforts on that. Maybe, do we have any bordering of any other cities, Riverside, Colton, in that area?
In terms of?
Where it's located? Yeah. Does anybody? The reason I'm saying is because, I, I mean, we don't have a regional park out here. And I know Colton is always short of, of league fields and, and we're certainly short of picnic facilities or just, so it might be something worth looking at. It might not be something the city funds, but it'd be something the city maybe partners with or discusses with, with the county. And is there, do we know if the people want to, I mean, obviously, they're not maintaining it, so do they want to keep that in their inventory of properties as private owner?
Yes. They, they are actually trying to develop the property.
Okay.
And so as part of our Lewis Pacific Plan, we've been having that conversation with them.
Okay.
Is there anything else you need on this item?
So was there a consensus that you guys?
Well, I don't think anybody wants, I don't think anybody wants the wood chips, right? I didn't hear anybody coming to bat for wood chips. Or, or the electronic billboard sign. All right. We'll move on to item 11, which is the establishment of endowment for annual maintenance and equipment for Grand Terrace Dog Park. Mr. Duffy?
So on June 13th, 2017, the city council approved a contract for the construction of Dog Park at 2270 Vista Grand Way, a former redevelopment agency property. We estimate that the cost for the Dog Park maintenance will be about $4,000 annually. And one of the things we talked to the council about was using that one-time park impact fee money would not, hopefully not generate an ongoing expense. And so we had a discussion at the time that we would bring back a way for citizens and corporations to donate to the Dog Park for Dog Park maintenance. And so what you have before you today is that Dog Park Endowment Program. Program. So we are actually having our groundbreaking on August 29, 2017. These postcards, we've just sent out today. And so if you have a dog registered in the city of Grand Terrace, you will receive one of these postcards. And encourage you to come to the event at 6:00 PM and it should be a good time for everyone. One of the things that we're going to be doing, let me just, so we have, the Dog Park has a number of benches, about 13 benches and four picnic tables within the Dog Park. And so one of our thought processes is, is that we would have a, you could, if you donated $1,500 to the Dog Park, you could receive a plaque that would be located near this particular bench. If you donated $1,000, you would get a plaque near this bench. And for $500 near this bench, what's the difference to the benches? Well, one of them is in a prime location and one of them is in a great location. And so the difference with this particular bench is it is actually, it sits on, on the north side of the park, there are two of them, and you could, it's a dual bench. You could sit on either side. So you could watch the views in the valley or you could watch your dog this way. And there should be a map here. So this map kind of identifies where they are. So this, there are two locations for this particular bench will look out over the valley. And then there are, I think, six or so of the B bench, which is here. And we have them in the large, in the small Dog Park and the law, in the large Dog Park. So there's an entryway here for small dogs and for large dogs. And so we also have, we've created, I think, an opportunity, if you want to give a significant contribution to the Dog Park, what staff would do is we would, we would take that contribution as a naming contribution. And here's what we would do. We would send the information to the council and let the council know, there's a process the council goes through. The mayor establishes a subcommittee, the subcommittee meets, has a public meeting, and if it's agreed that the person, corporation, or family wanted, donated the money for that particular purpose, that subcommittee of two council members would meet. If they said okay, it would go back to the council for a full council vote. If not, it dies right there at the, at the two-person subcommittee meeting. And so, but what happened is we would have an opportunity to raise somewhere in the area of about $40,000 with those, with those particular two, with those two items. So we have a resolution that's attached that will basically allow us to establish the Dog Park Endowment. And what we will end up doing, we will send out solicitation letters, but at this point in time, I need to take a break for the city attorney to inform us that we have an updated version of the resolution.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Duffy asked for us to prepare, our office to prepare an endowment fund resolution to establish that, and we did. And a traditional endowment fund is one where you put the money in as a principal and you only use the income from the money, however it's invested, interest or so on. And then Mr. Duffy felt that it would be better to have a type of endowment fund where you can also use the principal. So you have a little more latitude. So pursuant to his direction, we prepared a new one that's in front of you today. The difference between this one and the one in your packet is only that this one is set up to allow, to use the principal and hence it's a quasi-endowment fund. And there you have it.
What would the rules be for using the proceeds and not restricting all of it except for the interest? Would that be established as part of the endowment as well?
Yeah. The, well, the endowment resolution allows for both to be used.
Okay. But we don't have any, anything that defines what would make sense to actually use that money as opposed to leaving it as an endowment?
So the endowment is set up and specifically says for maintenance and equipment. And so, for example, if you had $100,000, you, you might get 3% interest and you'd end up with almost enough money to pay for the annual maintenance. And so you would only use the principal if you don't have enough interest for the, for the annual maintenance of $4,000 for the, for the, you know, for the, for the maintenance of the park.
I understand that. I just, it seems to me that if, if we're going to set up an endowment and then we're going to immediately start using the principal, then, then why are we not just creating a savings account instead of an endowment? I'm not saying that I, that I suggest we do that. It just seems like we're defeating the purpose of an endowment.
Well, you know, that's a good point. But one of the things that could possibly happen, because we have a specific cause for the proceeds, if someone were to donate, let's say, their inheritance or their, or their home, they would more like to do that with an endowment versus a savings account that the city would have. That's one of the reasons why we went with that route, that route. Now, if, if it is the council's desire to have it, for only the principal to be used, the downside of that is that you would certainly have a general fund impact.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I do. And this is my fault because I approved something that I was focused on the naming issues. And not that somebody would give us some money and get a name because for the Dog Park, we spent $286,000 and we're putting an additional $50,000. And so somebody's going to come with 10% or less than 10% and have a park name for them? It just seems, yeah. And the other thing too is $4,000 a year maintenance costs, I prefer not to go through the gymnastics of an endowment. Or if we do the endowment, that it's an endowment. But it just seems that we're going through a lot of gymnastics for $4,000 a year. And I'm uncomfortable with, with naming something for a small petence of money compared to what, you know, the Commonwealth of Grand Terrace has put up for, for a Dog Park. I'm just not comfortable with it at all.
Mayor?
Mr. Duffy?
Well, and as, as always, what staff has put forward is, is a proposal. If the, if the council wanted to approve the endowment and strike out any potential naming, what we did was we talked about the process. And so if council didn't want to have, follow that process, we didn't want to have the naming included, that's fine. This is a concept that we bring to the council.
Okay. Is the naming rights part of the resolution at this point? No. That's just one of our other ordinances that we have about our process for naming things. Okay. And so what we have is we have one ordinance that would have us establish a, an endowment and the other one would have us establish a quasi-endowment.
What, the one that's on the dais that you received today is a quasi-endowment that would allow the invasion of the principal for purposes of operation. The one in the packet is a traditional endowment. And I think the, what Mr. Duffy was talking about naming or putting names on benches and stuff like that, that's a fundraising technique. It's not part of this. This is really just to set up a dedicated account.
Okay.
Or fund.
But I do want to note though, that, that resolution does give staff direction to do that. So I want to make sure that that, they're aware of that.
And I think this is why I get confused on when I approve something because we constantly get items that have a lot of subtext and motifs and interpretations. So what are we doing tonight? What are you asking us to do tonight that doesn't have a subtext or a subplot?
I was asking you to approve an endowment for the maintenance of the Dog Park.
With direction to raise funds for the endowment?
Yes.
Any other questions?
So is this a quasi-endowment or an endowment?
We have two of them in front of us. The one that's in our packet.
Which is what?
The one that's in our packet is the endowment. The one that is, was on the dais is a, was written.
Oh, okay. I didn't even see that one.
And that was the one that the city attorney was talking about, that that's an option for us. Councilmember Reiners?
I would echo Mayor Protem's concerns about the naming because although I would appreciate someone writing a very large check, I have never been a fan of someone writing a check and getting a name put on an actual building or a park. We have a lot of people here who have put hundreds and hundreds of hours into this, who may actually be more deserving of a name. So I would support the endowment without the naming.
So the endowment does not have the naming provisions in there? It does not. Okay. All right. Any other questions at this time?
But it's in here.
It's in the staff report?
Yeah.
But it's not in the resolution. Okay.
If I, Madam Mayor, yes, just to clarify, the, the resolution is to set up the, the fund, a separate fund. But as was said earlier by Mr. Duffy, he wants direction on the fundraising. And I think what Councilmember Reiners was saying, that he is in support of setting up the fund, but as far as fundraising, he doesn't like the naming aspect. Is that correct?
The name of the park, the benches and the plaques, I think that's wonderful. But the park itself, that's a pretty big chunk.
Why shouldn't we just strike out the, "In addition, any gift of $25,000 or more would be recommended for consideration?" Because we don't want to do that.
You have the staff report, maybe?
Mayor Protem?
Yeah. Packet 101.
Right. We are, we are looking at the actual resolution that does not include that from the staff report. So that would be page 103 and 104 and 105. So the first part is the, the background of the staff report where it's talking about the, the naming.
Okay. So we're going to?
So all we're looking at is the resolution that would establish a fund.
Okay.
And so it doesn't get, and then, and then Mr. Duffy's asking for direction on fundraising to put money into that fund?
Well, yeah, because that's what concerns me. So, you know, so because there's no direction in the resolution.
Correct.
There's direction in the, in the body of the staff report that I don't agree with.
Right. And I'm hearing you and Councilmember Reiner say, "Don't fundraise to name the park." And, and I would believe.
Other than benches.
Other than, but that's not the naming of the park.
Right.
Okay. And, and Councilmember Wilson, are you in agreement on the fundraising aspect?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would agree. I think it's probably better for us to exclude the name of, the naming of the park.
Okay. Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, I agree with, at the fundraiser, the naming of the park shouldn't be a consideration. But also on the fundraiser, is this a tax deduction for the benches?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we did some research and, and when you donate money to a city, you can get a write-off. We have the IRS code section that allows for that. It'll be going into this fund, but you're giving the donation to the city. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions before I open up to public comment? Okay. Are there requests to speak? Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, council members, Mr. Duffy, staff, my name is Mike Ald. I am here as a board member for the Foundation of Grand Terrace. And my wife and I are chairs of the Dog Park Committee for the past five years or so. And we've waited a long time and worked very hard to get to this point. And I think that the, the idea of having some sort of fund to maintain the park through the, into the future, when we have other city councils and we have different types of budget constraints, I think is a very, very valuable option for us. We raised money for a Dog Park that didn't exist. And we scraped and spent hours, as Mr. Duffy would say, you know, selling cakes, bake sales to try to raise the money. We do have, in the Foundation of Grand Terrace, we do have over $10,000, which is specifically earmarked to go to the Dog Park. And at our last meeting in, I'm sorry, meeting, two meetings ago in June, we did approve the dispersal or, anyway. We're going to give $3,000 right off the bat to this endowment, quasi-endowment or semi- quasi-endowment, however it turns out, when we're able to do that. And I've talked to other members. Once there's actually a park in place, we can do fundraising and we intend to do fundraising. The, the bricks and the benches and, and water fountain or a statuette of your dog, whatever, these are things that if there's actually a park there, people are going to be much more interested in doing it. If, if we were able to, to raise $10,000 on, on what at the time probably seemed like a leap of faith that we would ever have a Dog Park, it turns out that it did happen. We do have it and we will be able to raise money. And the city of Grand Terrace is very, very lucky to have the dedicated people at the Foundation of Grand Terrace who have worked tirelessly at this particular effort, this particular project, and many others, which I'm not going to even bother naming them. And we will continue to do so. And I think that it would be to the city's best interest to approve this fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ald. I appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion on this item. Would anyone like an endowment? Would anyone like a quasi-endowment?
I just haven't had a chance to read the resolution. It wasn't part of my packet.
I will move to approve resolution establishing an endowment fund for the Grand Terrace Dog Park for annual maintenance and equipment.
And that was the original one that was in the packet?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I apologize. I was sitting here looking at the one that's in the packet. It actually isn't the original one we put in there that was an actual endowment. But if you vote to do an actual endowment, we have, we have it. It's just not in your packet.
What is the one that's in our packet that talks about being a resolution for an endowment?
It, it was modified from the one that we originally put in there. And then when we saw the modification, we weren't happy with it. So we prepared the quasi-endowment.
And the difference between the one that's in our packet and the quasi-endowment is what?
They're both quasi-endowments, but the one that's on the dais is the better one.
Is the better one. Okay. So both of them allow you to cut into the principal?
That's correct. But if you want to do one where you can't cut into the principal, we have one available.
Is that the motion that you were making, Councilmember Reiner?
It is because I, there wouldn't be much of a benefit because there's not that much money that there wouldn't be enough interest to really make a difference right now.
All right. So you are?
You want a quasi-endowment so that you can use the principal.
Correct.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Reiner wants the quasi-endowment.
And he wants the good quasi-endowment, not the one that was in?
The good one, right?
The better one.
The better one.
Better one. Okay. So your motion is for, for this better quasi-endowment. Is there a second on this item?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers Reiner, Hussey, Wilson vote yes. Mayor Protem votes yes. Mayor votes yes. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to item 12, which is the childcare playground resurfacing. Mr. French?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Alan French, Public Works Director. I'm here to present this item to you this evening. This item supports the 2030 goal, number two, maintaining public safety, as well as goal number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships. Back in May, earlier this year, the council adopted the resolution to transfer the childcare program. As part of that transfer, the facilities are also involved in that. One of the facilities- One of the facilities is a childcare center, of which there are play areas at the exterior of the center. There are three areas, and each of the areas needs some rehabilitation. Let's see if I need... This is a photo, and you may have seen this earlier with Mr. Duffy's presentation. This is area one, where the surface is separating near the edges. As part of the transfer of the facility, assessments were done of this facility, and items to ensure the smooth transition were listed. We had, let's see if we could... There's another one of the areas needing some work, and then the third area, all needs some work. Because time was of the essence, we asked vendors to provide estimates for the repairs on the three areas, and once all the data was acquired, the various options were considered. And the one item that we are recommending is a $22,325 fix as the best option with the quickest response, and would give us the best product. So, at this time, the staff is recommending the work to No Fault Sports Group. And this was listed on the earlier item that Mr. Duffy presented. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
So, the $22,326 is in addition to the $30,000 that was discussed earlier?
No, ma'am, this is part of it.
This is part of it?
No, Madam Mayor. Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, will you clarify, please, that we are allowed to spend this money? That is the part of the 5% bond proceeds from our redevelopment bonds?
Yes, it's not a maintenance project, though that term was used in some of the reports. It's really a rehabilitation, and actually, I had, I requested Baron to research that out specifically, and he came to the conclusion that we can use the bond proceeds for this under the A-bond, which is what we're talking about.
And we do have approval from the state to spend the $289,000 bond proceeds, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we do need to take care of these children, but, you know, as I'm reading, like, in the second paragraph, I know we agreed on it, the child service center, you know, paid no more than $750, or, and we covered other costs. I mean, are they gonna nickel and dimas on everything before the year's up? Are we... I thought we went through our buildings. Was our building not up to par on this, or state standards?
This is the only thing that we have left before we bring in the city inspector. We've taken care of all the other items they requested.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Bring it back to council for their consideration of a motion.
I move the award contract agreement to No Fault Sports Group LLC in the amount of $22,326 for upgrading the childcare playground services to comply with state requirements, and to adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of bond proceeds.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson vote yes. Mayor Protem Robles votes yes. Mayor McNaboe votes yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 13, which is an ordinance, which is ordinance updates for requirement of a permit for parkway tree pruning. Mr. French, you're up again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, Alan French, Public Works Director. I'm here to present this item to you this evening, which clarifies the ordinance as it relates to tree pruning. These are trees located within the city road right-of-way. The staff report supports the 2030 vision goal of maintaining public safety by ensuring work in the road right-of-way on the street trees is done properly. The existing ordinance that's already in force has been part of the municipal code for many years. After previous items were reviewed, legal counsel had reviewed those specific ordinances and recommended some verbiage changes to clarify it. Specifically, sections 4.56.01.0 of Title IV, and chapters 12.28.140, and 12.32.060 of the code relating to the street trees, had some ambiguity, and they needed to be All the recommended text to ensure, this recommended text will ensure that all the work on the trees in the city right-of-way are covered by the ordinance. The underlined text in the staff report is recommended, and it is all addition to the existing text that's there. So, at this time, the staff is recommending the council find that the ordinance is categorically exempt from SEQA, review and read by title only, and introduce the update to the ordinance relating to the street trees. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Is this a no-fee permit?
Yes, sir. It will be a no-fee.
Any other questions of staff? How do we stop people from picking flowers that are in their own yard?
Um...
And if I get a permit, can I get a permit for all time to pick those flowers?
Um, no, ma'am.
Okay. My issue with this is, I don't know how we're gonna enforce it. And I think that most people that have trees that are in the public right-of-way but on their land are in belief that those are their trees. And I understand that we have started a project, and started the service again of trimming trees that are city-owned trees or in the public right-of-way. And it seems to me that it would make more sense to have a communication with the residents so that they understand what's in the public right-of-way, and if it needs to be trimmed, that it's more of a request for service of the city to do that maintenance than it is to put that on the residence, that they have to come in and have the burden of getting a permit, especially if they decide to do some yard work on the weekends, and not know that they need a permit, and have code enforcement happen by, and write them a citation, and I just, I don't understand how we enforce this without making it something that just doesn't make sense for the residents.
Good. Yes, Mayor.
I'll go you one better, Your Honor. I have a question. Has there been a problem before this time with any jurisdiction within the state of California where there isn't a permit that allows somebody to trim a street tree that's actually attached to their front yard, and somebody got injured or something? Is that what we're dealing with here?
No, sir, councilman. What we're trying to avoid is the owner over-trimming or not trimming properly, and then the tree eventually dies. That's what we're trying to make sure, the trimming is done properly, and that the tree is sustainable.
What I think I've seen over the past is, is that, especially in new tracts, and if they understand that they're gonna have to pull a permit and go through a bunch of hyperbole, they probably just yank the tree out. And that's what's happened a lot, unfortunately. I think we gotta, we might have a double-edged sword here.
Well, again, they can remove the tree, but they have to get a permit, unfortunately.
Got a whole bunch of them next to me. Nobody's ever seen them with a ticket like they do with other things. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff at this time? Mr. Duffy, you have comments?
Yes, Mayor, as Mr. French mentioned earlier, this is just a modification to the language. There is, if you do nothing today, the requirements are going to be in place where a resident cannot trim, it's not supposed to trim their tree without permission from the city. So, if you do nothing today, it's still going to be in effect. I think our overall goal is this, is so, when we first started the trimming program, we had to remove 100 dead or diseased trees. Part of that was because they were improperly trimmed. One of the things that happens is that we often find arborists or landscapers coming into the city without a business license. So, what this would do is this required, if everyone knew that, if you're gonna do some major work, you're absolutely right. The way it's written, it appears that you can't pick a flower.
It says that. It says I can't.
But the overall goal here is to stop people from butchering and destroying the trees. And I think you're absolutely right, is that if you do nothing, it's still going to be the same, except right now, we're asking them to come in and get a permit.
But by passing these amendments, we're not asking them to come in and get a permit, we're passing an amendment to an ordinance. I don't know that we've really communicated to the residents that the city has taken the service of cutting the trees and trimming the trees, and that there should be a process for requesting that service.
Would you, so, would, we could certainly do a public information campaign.
But, you know, and that's just my comment. So, I will open it up to public if there are no other questions. Councilmember Hussey?
Well, I kind of understand this. Well, the thing is, like Edison, when they topped palm trees, I mean, we got three down there that still haven't been removed, and I know they did it, and it makes, it looks ugly. It's an ugly sign, and then do they come by and get permission from the city to top those, or they just say, hey, it's part of a safety concern, and we're just gonna do it and enjoy your ugly tree after we're done, or?
Mr. French?
Yes, councilman, technically, they should have came to us to do any modification. If those trees are in the road right-of-way, they should have come to us.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying, they already did it. So, do we give them the bill, because that tree's no longer, you know, that all three of them look bad, and then the city, our taxpayers are gonna have to pay for it when Edison's actually ruined the tree? That's my concern. They should put the bill to fix that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item?
Jeffrey McConnell, Walnut Avenue. I believe Mawbury's Tree Service has a contract with Edison. They're required to go around and trim trees for the safety of the power poles, which, of course, is the safety of the public in case of a high windstorm, or some other act of mother nature that would cause a tree or branch to fall down and cause an electrical outage, or damage to, liability towards Edison Company. So, they have a liability requirement, too. Maybe they should, you talk to them about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a handheld microphone? Oh, look at that, he's gonna extend that out to you. He'll meet you halfway.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think I was daydreaming or doing something else while there was conversation here, I apologize. Is there a fee to get this permit? Is it just paperwork?
Paperwork.
Just paperwork? Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak on this item? Thank you, Ms. Forbes, for standing up, and we'll make sure we get the handheld microphone fixed. All right, nobody else coming forward to speak on this item? I'll bring it back to council for their consideration of a motion on this item.
I will make the motion to find that the ordinance is categorically exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, and 2, read by title only and waive further reading, and introduce an update to ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, to date Section 4.56.01.0, permit fee of Title IV, comprehensive fee schedules, fines, and taxes, and Chapter 12.28.140, maintenance and pruning, and Chapter 12.32.060, trees and plants, to Title 12, streets, sidewalks, and public places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code relating to street trees.
I'll second the motion. All right, please.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Councilmember Wilson, Mayor McNaboe voting no.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item 14, which is an ordinance to repeal Chapter 9.32, Regulation of Registered Sex Offenders of Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, relating to sex offenders, and a finding that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA review. May we have a staff report, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, we're happy to give you a staff report. The, I think this all started a few years ago when Jessica's Law was passed, and that law pretty much indicated that sex offenders, registered sex offenders who were on parole could not live, their residency requirements could not live within certain distance of a school, parks, daycare facilities, or whatevers to protect the children. And also, they weren't to go into parks and stuff like that, and Jessica's Law said that those were the parameters. Now, that's the state law. And then Jessica's Law went one step further and said cities could have more restrictive distances and stuff like that, and they were allowed to do that. So, many cities, including Grand Terrace, did add some things to it. I've even seen a city that will remain nameless, and I'm sure many of them tried, is to make the distances circles so large that there would be nowheres in their city where somebody could live. Well, because of that, a lot of lawsuits came out, and a lot of court decisions were rendered. And those court decisions came down saying that these restrictions were unconstitutional. In fact, in one case that was in San Diego, they weren't even talking about the restrictions that cities added on to them, but the actual restrictions in Jessica's Law were unconstitutional. So, what the City of Grand Terrace has received, and just recently received, a second letter from a public interest group that has threatened to sue the city if it were to keep its ordinances on the books. Now, basically, the ordinances that the City of Grand Terrace have was to extend the prohibition, not just to sex offenders on parole, but to all registered sex offenders, and so on. And I'll read you just one portion of the case to give you the flavor. It says on March, of one of the cases, "On March 2, 2015, the California Supreme Court in Ray Taylor held that blanket enforcement of residency restrictions under Penal Code Section 3003.5b hampers efforts to supervise and rehabilitate sex offenders in the interest of public safety. Such enforcement was arbitrary and oppressive, violating due process under the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as such enforcement caused many registered sex offenders on parole in San Diego County to be homeless. And such blanket restrictions bear no rational relationship to advancing the state's legitimate goal of protecting children and sexual predators." So, that's where the courts are coming from. It is our office's opinion that if the Grand Terrace Code were challenged, it would be very difficult to defend, and so our recommendation is that you repeal... And so our recommendation is that you repeal it.
Any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
So, just to make this clear and show the public's got some concerns too, because we voted on as a city to pass our ordinance so sex offenders can't come within the limits. So now we're having a public or private group that wants to sue cities because we're violating the sex offenders' rights where they can't live somewhere and they're becoming homeless. So most of the sex offenders are getting released from our system, in the prison system because we're clearing our jails up and some, I won't get into that, who wants to clear them out, but they're coming home to their parents because they have nowhere to live. And the parents might be living by the schools, the parents might be living by the parks. So now if we don't let the parents bring in their own children who just got out and they're sex offenders, we're going to get sued, the city. And I know there might be a fine line far as the sex offenders, if you had consensual sex as minors and then somebody gets mad and then it's on the record forever, but, you know, as a city council member and in law enforcement, you know, it really personally irks me that we have to listen to this and we can't protect our residents. I'm all for protecting our residents. And then again, I don't want to have a frivolous lawsuit on our hands here. So that's just my opinion on how I'm interpreting and how we're going about doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Any other questions of staff? All right, I will open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? I see two here. I'm going to have Mr. Gallo come up first and then we will get a microphone back out to you, Ms. Forbes.
John Gallo on DeSoto Street. I agree with Councilmember Hussey. I'm real concerned about this change. I realize we have plenty of attorneys that want to sue everybody, but having worked with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children for almost 15 years with my company and knowing what these people go through and knowing what they do to children and others, I find it very hard that we have to sit here and think about a threat of a lawsuit and changing an ordinance and changing how we do things while we know the end result is never good for a kid. So I really would want the council and the mayor to take a really hard look at this. Lawsuits can be threatened all day long. At some point, somebody has to take a stand and I think we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Bobby Forbes, 11-850 Brent Avenue, Grand Terrace. A number of years ago, I had a rental over on Robin Way in Grand Terrace and that man's, that family son was released from jail and he was a sex offender. When that, I didn't know anything about it, this man, he was 35 years old probably, was coming to stay with his parents. The neighborhood went nuts, calling me, threatening me, threatening the landlord. This was probably seven or eight years ago. And they were pretty evil all the way around because this man was going to come live at the house. There was nothing I could do. The landlord said, "Let it ride, Bobby, see what happens." They ended up buying a house here in Grand Terrace, they live here in town. And that son, I believe, still lives with them. I didn't like it. I also didn't like seeing how the people were, but I could understand it. And one time, I remember there were 11 sex offenders in Grand Terrace. I haven't checked for quite some time. The last time I checked, there were six, probably three or four in my neighborhood and two were up here in a really nice part of town. It's scary. I quit letting my daughter walk around the neighborhood when I found out where they were living and they're still living in my neighborhood. I don't know what all can be done, but I just wanted to share that little incident that I personally dealt with on a rental property. It's not on my applications. I don't know how far I can take it in checking if I'm allowed to dismiss someone, if I should happen to find out or already know about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, City Council, I just have a question for the attorney or for the mayor. If we do follow the attorney's recommendation, our city attorney's recommendation, what will we revert to? The state's or the Jessica's Law's basics, what that dictates? Is that what it's saying, that we can have that but no more? Because I mean, what's the threat? That they're going to, if we follow the law and not add to it, then are they still going to, are they still threatening us? You know? That, that's, I'm kind of wondering because the provisions of Jessica's Law may be enough to get us, but if they're still going to threaten us with that, well, they can go pound sand or something, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. City Attorney, will you clarify what we are allowed to enforce?
Yes, the Jessica's Law is still on the books. It depends on the community. If, if you take a particular community and run the radiuses and there's still adequate area for people to live that are registered, then Jessica's Law will be good in that community. I think in the San Diego area where that was done, it didn't work. But, yeah, Jessica's Law is still on the book. It has not been overruled and those provisions will still be in place. That's the answer.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. If not, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Can I ask City Attorney a question?
Sure. Councilmember Ryan Arns.
What are the Jessica's Law restrictions as far as parks and schools? Do we have that?
I don't have it with me, no. There's a certain number of feet from each one of those sensitive areas and I apologize, I don't have Jessica's Law. Some of them are, yes.
I think we need to.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I think we need to have a better report for the community on this. Because my understanding when we were counseled on this was the, we enacted beyond what was on case law, but we don't have that, we're unable to answer that for the public today. What Jessica's Law provides, is it, you know, I mean, saying it works for San Diego, but we don't know what the measurements are for this town, I don't think is satisfactory to it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, members of council, you're correct with regard to what you understood from the meeting. Yes, the city added something on. And so the, the part that was added on is what is being recommended to take off. And I think the question from the gentleman in the audience was, would Jessica's Law be enforceable in the City of Grand Terrace? And I say until there's evidence that Jessica's Law is too onerous by its parameters in the City of Grand Terrace, the answer is yes, it would still be viable here.
Okay, so then that's clear enough.
On packet page 142, it talks about where is Section 9.32.020, Grand Terrace Municipal Code prohibits sex offenders from, or registered sex offenders from entering or being within 300 feet of the school or a park where children are present and this provision is most likely preempted by state law. Does that mean that state law allows them to be closer than that?
I, I would believe so.
Yeah, the next section says residing within 2,640 feet of a school or within 2,000 feet of a park or a daycare center and these provisions are most likely inapplicable on a blanket basis.
Yeah, I may go back to the 300 feet. I think that, again, without Jessica's Law in front of me, and I apologize, I didn't know there was going to be questions about Jessica's Law tonight, but the, remember, what the City of Grand Terrace did was to put all registered sex offenders. Jessica's Law only applies to sex offenders who are on parole. So it might still be 300 feet under Jessica's Law, it's just that we've added more people to the pool.
Right. I think the concern is that it seems like we're just repealing an ordinance having to do with sex offenders in our community and that's a pretty touchy subject. So without knowing what is left in place, it seems like we're just repealing everything.
No, yeah, again, as I said to Councilmember Robles, is that all we're doing is repealing what the city added on, which is what many cities are having to do. And Jessica's Law is still in place, it's still good law.
Okay, it's our right to discuss what was counsel we were given on this, right?
Excuse me?
It's our right to discuss the counsel that was given to us, right? Why this came forward?
Yes.
Okay, because we were told, and it says where is on March 2nd, 2015, the California Supreme Court and Taylor, that the blanket enforcement of residence requirements under Penal Code, blah, 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 hampers efforts, blah, 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 but it's, were arbitrary and oppressive, violating due process under the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. So we're dealing with something that the Supreme Court's already weighed in and says violates due process under the 14th Amendment. So we still have safeguards, we just can't have the safeguards that we added and enhanced. So the issue is then, you know, do you want us, do we want to litigate this when we don't have enough resources as it is and to spend money making a point that we're going to lose? That's the issue that was before me.
Councilmember Ryan Arns, did you have comment?
I did. I have two sides to this. The one side is that we hire a city attorney and pay a city attorney's office to deal with things like that. So part of me says we need to follow this advice, otherwise why do we have one? The other side says I would like to be totally clear on what's in place now and what will be left in place. Do we have a little time on this? Could this come back with a white paper with two columns? Here's what we have now, here's what we will have left.
We'd be more than happy to do that.
We do have a little time?
Yes, the, the people that are threatening us said within 60 days, however, I don't see them jumping if we're dealing with the issue on it. And I don't think we have to be guided by arbitrary guidelines that they give us. I think you need to know what you need, you need to have what you need to know to make a proper decision. And we'd be happy to bring back, report at your next meeting with all the parameters of Jessica's Law and what yours are. And if you want it set up in a graph type form, we'd be happy to do that.
Because I want it to be clear to the public as well.
Certainly.
Exactly what it is we're doing. And if we can't, if we're bantering and can't really even figure it out at this point, I would hate to pass something like that.
All right? Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
All right, just a comment. This is a classic case of, of state Supreme Court making laws instead of actually interpreting things. And unfortunately, this country has gotten to a point where our court system has taken the step of the legislative system. So it's important for us to understand that when we elect representatives and we expect them to be able to make the laws, that we also pay attention to those other boxes that are on there. Let's say that the judge is going to be here for about another 10 or 15 years because when they start, when they step to interpret laws, but actually we make the law. And in essence, what they've done is they've short-sheeted us and told us, we don't see any justification for a more restrictive law. It's the same concept as if it was a building law, the same circumstance. You adopt the UBC and then after that, you have to prove that there is a justification for it. If you don't, you open yourself up to a lawsuit or a challenge and/or cost involved with that. So in this case, it's our children that suffer. Maybe it's time for somebody to stand up.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. All right, we'll go to City Manager Communications. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few notes that I have from tonight's meeting regarding the council comments and agenda items. It was referenced tonight that council is not in favor of seeing a proposal brought back for wood chips. And so we'll bring something back different than that. Also, there was also a desire to, for staff to make contact with Southern California Edison about the topping of those particular trees. Just in that, I have a few items. I'm missing my little clicker. Oh, there it is, it's all put away. All right. We mentioned it earlier, we have the dog park groundbreaking happening on August 29th at 6:00 PM and dogs are welcome and all those invitations went out today. And this is that, we have another event on Thursday, August 24th, at 2017. We have the dinner and the community. Please join our local San Marino County sheriffs and the neighborhood watch groups for dinner and information about crime statistics in Grand Terrace. Lieutenant Douglas Wolfe and his support staff will be on hand to do the talk. We'll talk about the level of daily resources committed to Grand Terrace, special services available to Grand Terrace, things you can do to protect your home and businesses. And city staff will be, will walk attendees through, the city clerk will, ways to secure additional law enforcement services. Talk about the process according to that. So it'll be in Azure Hills, dinner will be provided and we look forward to seeing you there. So this is Go Human Campaign provided by SCAG. So SCAG received this grant to talk about safety and safety around intersections. So the city contacted SCAG and they provided us with these various types of lawn signs. And if residents would like, if you live in their school or live in their busy intersections, you'd like to have one of these slow down, she's going places lawn signs or one of the life moves fast or slow down to keep her safe, slow down there's, they're going places or slow down and stop every intersection is a crosswalk. You can certainly contact our office. We're working with the school district, working with the PTAs and also with the superintendent to see if the schools would like some of these signs. We have 100 of them to distribute to the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Hussey?
Now, those signs are passed out, it's not going to mess up our sign ordinance, is it?
Yes.
I'm working with the planning department to make sure.
Okay, I'm just worried about that. I don't want somebody to get in trouble when they put the sign out there.
Remember, these are going to be, we'll give them to residents and they'll be able to put them on, they're allowed to put a yard sign in their yard.
In the right of way though?
In the right, 12 foot from it? Yeah, okay.
Can we have one that says when somebody's backing out of Cedar Brothers, you're supposed to stop?
I just wanted to add, Madam Mayor, that prior to the, obtaining these signs, city manager did speak with the planning department and there are exemptions for government related signs that provide information for public safety. So, we're fine.
Thank you. Of course, of course there are.
Yeah, safe there were.
All right, tonight we will adjourn in memory of Ullalio Aldoco. And our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you all for being here, thank you for your comments, thank you council for your discussion. We are adjourned.